Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
This five thirty-five, we'll call the committee meetings of Port Allen City Council to order for July fifth, two thousand twenty-three. This time I'd like to request everyone to either turn off or silence your electronic devices, please. To begin, we will recite the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains us, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as eternal. Call the Public Safety Committee to order to establish a court. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Revere?
Here.
Ms. Lacy from Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number four, the police department report, Chief Hicks.
Good evening. How y'all doing today?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, in order to keep both of yourself and the city council aware of the activities of Port Allen Police Department offered account for the month of June twenty twenty-three, alarm, alarm home businesses thirty-nine, disturbance fourteen, custody matter five, death six, remaining seven, suspicious activity seven, check person five, um, Port Allen Fire Department medical forty-two, animal control eight, information eleven, traffic stop eight. Uh, incidents by location, northeast of Court Street nearly one forty-six, northwest of Court Street nearly one seventy-two, southeast of Court Street nearly one forty-five, southwest of Court Street nearly one fifty-four, south by ten seventeen. Total suspects arrested nineteen, uh, traffic crashes seventeen and traffic tickets twenty-five.
Gee, how you doing, folks?
How you doing?
Um, I know we had a fire last night on Harbron Drive. You ever made it out okay?
Yeah, the, uh, uh, the tuition, uh, text me and told me that the family got out safely and was determined that it was electrical fire.
Electrical, okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, everybody got out safe, uh, pulled out the fire department, uh, jumped on it and got it under control from what I'm being told very quickly.
Well, I can't tell. The house totaled.
Well, you know, depending on how fast it spread, they got out there and contained it, but you know, forested it other places.
Well, at least other houses didn't get fired, so that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have one question. Chief, it's, tell me what's, uh, if the officers is called out, this increases to tell someone that they have to leave a home, a family home.
Mm-hmm.
How do they, is, what draw the line between, uh, criminal and like civil? Like if they not, is a, if a crime were committed, could they just tell people, yeah, you, you have to go?
Uh, depending on the family member, if it's brother and sister, if it's, it's air property, uh, if the parents are the seats and he goes to the siblings. Um, it's pretty much a civil matter. Um, if they're not doing anything, one family member might tell them, yeah, they can stay there if it's a family house. Other brother might say, no, they can't stay there. So it comes down to a civil matter till they get a succession deed. One sibling has to buy the other sibling out, if it's multiple siblings, somebody, they all have to come to an agreement and go to court on it. But if, if they're not doing anything, it's really, we kind of in a seesaw in the middle of it when it comes down to a family member, one another family member, a grandchild, niece, nephew removed, and we always tell them if, if the succession hasn't been done or you want to get that resolved, we got to go through the code with the, with the civil matter, Port Allen City Code with that. Cause we have a property, I mean, problem with it with the, with the dead family, uh, the aunt, auntie, the nephew permission to stay there, but the dad is not living there, but he wants his son gone and, but he has a, a family living in the house also. So it's, it's just a, a seesaw thing that comes to that.
But it's not normal for the police department to say, oh, you have to leave one person if, if no crime was being committed.
Right, right.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Item number five, the nuisance violation report, Inspector Giff.
Evening, councilman. Yes, uh, month of June, I had a total of fourteen cases, uh, fourteen high grades, I have one closed and, uh, thirteen still, uh, still open. Um. Any, any question? I think I answered all y'all questions, uh, really, just, uh, I think that's what I was about to talk about, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what that question was.
Does, does somebody currently living in a travel trailer on Avenue G that they're using water, electricity from the house, which is strictly against city code and anyway, so. So.
Oh.
Five forty-one, Avenue G.
They, they still have a thing that they have not really identified who living in there, so.
Third, uh, third and Cherokee, that lot.
What is it, I'm sorry?
That lot on third and right in the corner.
Yeah, third, uh, on the corner, third.
A chair.
Right in my left, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that one, that one's on my cousin's wall. I need a P O S, gonna be cut some.
Okay. Um, how about, uh, Jefferson Run, Michigan, all of the, the containers with, uh, rolling bear stuff?
Probably moved it.
Yeah, he, every time he puts something up, he takes something else out, so I've been, I've been keeping an eye on him also.
What was that? Thought he had cleared it up?
He cleaned it up once, and then like I said, he put most of it, yeah, there's always something there.
Okay.
Okay, so that, uh, third of Cherokee, you figured out how long?
Third, I gotta get, like I said, I gotta get a P O and then I'm gonna start, I'm gonna send the guy to get that one cut.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
You have a good day.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
Item number six, a German.
Call to order, establish a court. Roll call, please. Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Revere?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Long President.
Item number four, discuss status of phase eleven of the road rehabilita- rehabilitation program by Tony Anacron.
Thank you. Um, y'all, this is just kind of a wrap-up of this particular, uh, project, uh, like is typical with these for smaller road programs, we go ahead and, um, uh, you know, it's typically one pay request, one, uh, adjustment change order and substantial. The contractor, um, on this project, uh, Barbara Brothers, uh, I think did a good job. There's a few little items that they need to, uh, address, but, uh, nothing, uh, major. Uh, so I guess at y'all's next meeting, I'd like to request that, um, and I guess it has to kind of go with this order, that y'all, um, grant a, uh, contract change order, which essentially it takes all the unit prices and adjusts them at the end, and it's for four hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy cents, which obviously is good on a three hundred thousand dollar contract. And then based on that change order, approve their, um, you know, I'm sorry I said that, and it's actually a decrease of four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, uh, based on that change order, the payout would be in the amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Um, and you would keep retainage of thirty-five thousand, seven thirty-three and thirteen cents. Um, and that retainage would, uh, be, um, uh, approved, uh, after they provided the clear lien certificate and, um, you know, making sure they had done all their stuff. Typically, once you give them the substantial completion, they can, they'll file it in the courthouse, it takes forty-five days. Then, um, you know, they'll request a, a payout just for the retainage. So I'd like, I guess, all those three items to be on the agenda for next week. Um, I'm opening questions. I, I thought they, you know, it, it, it's all roads, um, overlays are kind of subjective, but I, I thought they did a good job. I like the, uh, the surface work. Any questions? Thank y'all.
Attorney?
Yes. Thank you. Item five, the public, Public Works Report by Erin Landry.
Hey, I'm looking at that. Uh, at sewer plant, they're supposed to be starting on their dewatering box this week and next week, uh.
On the what?
Man.
I didn't understand what you said.
I said this week they're supposed to be starting on their dewatering box at the point, at sewer point. Uh, supposed to begin this month doing some updates on the plant too.
Okay.
Uh, Spanx is supposed to come this week sometime and work on A Street, get it back up and running.
Is that the, um, the leak in the road by A Street you're talking about?
No.
The water leak?
No.
Are you talking about where the sewer's thing is?
Yeah, sewer's part of all.
Yeah, by Long Green.
A Street that's kind of traveling through the rocks.
Right, okay.
Tell them where that's coming from.
Yeah. I saw you were still kind of wet with all the rocks and gravel there.
Well, it, it's traveling through limestone.
Okay.
When we got down to the, to the dirt part of it.
Mm-hmm.
It was no water there, it was dry. So it's traveling through somewhere, but we got to find it.
Might be a rusted pipe or something, rusted out pipe or something.
Oh, it is, but it's just finding it on the, there's a mat, there's a mat up underneath that road.
Mm-hmm.
And it's getting through it somewhere.
Okay.
Not sure where. Uh, the roads department, like I said, they finished with the asphalt and blue bill and Kalinsula and Azalea. Uh, they finished installing concrete on sidewalks and at the bathrooms around the playground over there on Fourteenth Street. And they still have some patch, some concrete patchwork to go around the city. And they fixing to start getting some prices on patchwork on asphalt around the city. And the roads and drainage department. And the water department, we're, uh, we're about to finish up on that little grant we had on Louisiana Avenue to replace the two-inch water line parcel on Louisiana Avenue. All have to do that, this, uh, asphalt part of it. And then it'll be completed. And then we're still installing new water and gas services in the new subdivision. That's going to be a long project. Yeah, and that's about it.
Erin, they're running like seventy-one houses, homes?
Seventy-six houses.
So that's like the natural gas to each?
Every house.
So would you stub it out underground? If the homeowner decides they want?
Well, they paying for the services, so we install them, I mean, though.
Okay.
On every house. If it start on phase two, which I think it says will be like eighty-one houses in that phase, but.
How we going, would get the, um, some of the guys trained and all that, how that's, how that's going?
Uh, send them, I sent both of them to school a few months ago and neither one of them passed. So I got to send them back, uh, I think I wait three months and send them back. So I have a class available, I'll send them, we got to read tests.
And, and, uh, I talked to the, Aaron a while back and he said he's kind of showing them water and gas about two people, so. We probably need to look at that.
Yeah, we need to look at that. Put, put some ads in the papers or something.
I was gonna ask you if you shot a, uh, manpower for to do all that work with the new houses and stuff.
Yeah, pretty much sure. Yeah.
Uh, Erin, I have a question. The concrete project you said, who's responsible for disposing of the concrete that they, cause I excellent schedule about it on Louisiana and Tenth Street. My in-laws have a lot on the corner and the concrete that was, I guess, the old concrete that was busted up, um, it's in a pile on their lot and they wondering who's gonna?
On the corner of Tenth.
Louisiana and Tenth Street.
We, we must not pick it up whenever we, we broke it out to tie into the new water and gas lines.
Yeah, cause I excellent scheduled to go look at it. I didn't know who, I mean, I thought.
Yeah, no, we broke it out. I thought they kicked it all up.
They still sitting there.
Still there. Oh, good. Man.
I was just asking on the agenda items for that.
All right, that's it.
Anybody have any more questions from here?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Item number six of German.
Community Development Committee, I, item number one, call to order. Item number two, establish a form. Item number three, roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Lacy?
Ms. Gordon.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Long President.
Item number four, update on community development activities, Ms. Gordon, what's your?
All right, Chairman Brown and members of the community, any issues, uh, in all, in the audience, good evening. Uh, first of all, we, um, want to, uh, reflect back on our June team event and, uh, we are, uh, we're very pleased with the outcome of it. Uh, it's growing, um, by leaps and bounds and of course it's bigger and better each year. This year we've had, uh, some great, uh, support from our community and I kind of want to mention some of our co-sponsors that actually donated, uh, things to our, um, our, um, our event. And, uh, I'd just like to just go down the list. First of all, Coca-Cola, uh, Brian's Furniture, Lindsey Ferru was great, uh, Cane's, Raising Cane's, uh, Court Street Cafe, Cuyang's Barbecue, Mr. Glendagel, Domino's Pizza, Essential Credit Union, The Great American Cookie Company, Pot and Paddle, uh, Rotolos and Smoothie King. Uh, thanks, we got all that covered and those, they came in and really do many things to make our event great. Uh, we also had other things that, that went on, I think, especially our seniors kind of enjoyed it as well as having that pavilion out there really helped our other attendees enjoy the event. Uh, just looking for bigger and better next year. We're in the planning stage now for all our events. Uh, we're all excited. I know I told everyone a while back when we worked with Ellen Ogden to get a little grant that, that she will be painting again the D'Agostino Building on the events that are going on in the city and the parish. I forgot some of them.
Who donated the food?
Oh, my goodness. Uh, the city and the parish, um, that will advertise, uh, what we're doing for the rest of the year. And one of our biggest donors, oh my God, thank you, this, we've been really busy. Definitely want to give a big shout out and a big thank you, uh, to Badger Ron's Fine Food because they did donate, uh, the food for one day at, for the, um, for the seniors and of course food for the general public and Huggins. Um, I, I had food down here and I must've just missed it when I was typing it up, but you know, that just made an event great when you were able to give free food away, uh, to the people in the community in celebration of, of an event such as, um, June team. You got somebody else.
Did you, did you big brown donation?
Big Brown paid for one day for our senior citizens and that's the big, uh, Big Brown Give Back Foundation, I think it is.
Mr. Tom McGee?
Who? No, that was for, uh, hearts of a channel. But yes, he did. And, uh, Big Brown came in and donated and, and, uh, that just made everything just, we just, we would just overload. that just made everything just, we just, we were just overloaded with stuff. We went, went, we came four-handed, we went empty, back empty-handed, so everybody enjoyed themselves. All the food was great, everything was great. The, the door prizes, all, everything that they could give back to us just worked, was wonderful. And we were able not to have to really be short of anything. So, uh, I, I appreciate you, Ms. Gordon, cause I, I don't know why my mind, charged to my, my mind, y'all, heart. And so, uh, that's where we are on it, but, uh, we are in the process now getting thank you letters out to everybody and letting them know how much we appreciate it and how much the community really, really benefited from this event. Working toward other events in the year, we're just excited to, to do whatever we can to either assist or be partners or whatever we can do for any group or, uh, for their events or activities throughout, throughout the year. Any questions?
I don't know about questions, but for, you know, I can have some kind of.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think you spoke about that today.
I, I, I think that we should do a better job of advertising, you know, timely.
Well, we, we did the, we had the video contract and we kind of went with that in the newspaper, but I guess we could have done some more flyers and we, we did do, we did do that. But we did have serial advertisement because they were part of our, our contract and we did put the ad in the.
And as for the board, I think we should do a better job of getting more detailed information so we could generate information out to the community in which we represent.
Right, it was, it was our attempt to do it. I guess we just didn't talk long enough enough and everybody had other projects going on and we kind of caught each other halfway coming and going. But we will try to make sure that you get all the information that you, you know that you need to make sure that you get to your partner. We appreciate your input and your comments.
Any else in the room?
That's it.
All right, item number five, John. Call Personnel Committee to order to establish a forum. Could we have a roll call please?
Mr. Hubble?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Revere?
Here.
All committee members present.
Okay, item number four, discuss Chief Hicks's recommendation to hire the following. Joseph Azron at, uh, one ten eight, it's thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Chief?
Uh, good evening once again. Um, last month I conducted an interview with Mr. Burgon. Uh, he came in, he filled out an application, uh, through advertisement, uh, through a friend of mine. Came in, I interviewed him in front of hiring, I mean, interview panel with Captain Williams and Lieutenant Busham, Lieutenant Mitchell, uh, uh, Detective Celestine, uh, he knocked his interview out, out of the ballpark. He, he was passionate about what he wants to do, uh, this kind of, uh, profession. Uh, this is something that he always dreamed of and he wants to continue his law enforcement experience. Uh, he heard about, uh, the mission and the goal that I, I have, trying to instill and get his department back up to manpower and getting it moving forward. And, uh, he illustrated to me that he wants to be a part of that. Uh, I have Mr. Burgon here. If y'all want to ask him any questions, uh, inquire about it.
What part was his? The Lily part you knocked it out of?
Major Lee. Major Lee.
She's all familiar to you.
So can you give us a little like your work history or, I mean, you don't have to go into total, a lot of detail.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So I'm Joseph Badger, twenty-one years old. Um, I worked at, um, East Baton Rouge Sheriff's Office in, um, the jail. I currently work for the West Baton Rouge Sheriff's Office in the detention center. And I've also worked with ATC as an underage operative and a witness currently now that I'm over twenty-one. So I have a little bit of law enforcement background and, uh, it's my calling, it's my dream, it's my passion. There's nothing else I would want to do and I just want to serve and protect this community and make it a little bit better than when I found it and to help the citizens, uh, in any possible way that they may have. And I'll make their day a little bit better than when I found it.
You currently working for the sheriff of the?
Yes, ma'am.
You live in Port Island?
Oh, no, ma'am, I live in Baker. Well, I'm thinking about moving, so.
Any relatives info down?
Uh, no.
So how do we say your last name then? I'm about to say it wrong in my head even though Chief was saying.
Badger.
I'm good. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir. Nice to meet all of y'all. Thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to sit up here and talk to y'all. Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, all right, you want to make that an agenda for next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number five, Chief. All right, you're going on to the action. John.
Finance Committee. Uh, item number one, call order. Item number two, establish a corner. Item number three, roll call. Ms. Lacy? Present. Mr. Hubble?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
You have a corner. Item number four, discuss, uh, Chief Hicks's request for a budget amendment to purchase new tasers and body cameras.
Uh, council, in front of y'all, I put a packet together, uh, the appearing equipment that my officers have, the body cameras and tasers are getting ready to expire. Um, that equipment, uh, goes, uh, lasts for five years. If you look on page three of the, uh, the, uh, the packet I put together for y'all, uh, it says that we're gonna be getting eighteen tasers, eighteen body cams, uh, with the accessories that's, that's underneath each one. Um, if you turn to page, page six, uh, it gives you a, a overview of the cost, cost overview of the, the program length, which will be five years, uh, for the new equipment. Uh, we have a refresh schedule, uh, for the body cams every thirty to sixty months. Uh, the docking stations thirty to sixty months. Under that is the billing schedule, which gives you a breakdown of what it's gonna cost each year, uh, for the cameras. Overall, it's broken down in, in a yearly, uh, basis. Um, the cost, total cost of the, uh, body cams are eighty thousand, uh, fifty-one dollars, sixty-eight cents and the total cost of the taser is seventy-six thousand, forty-two dollars and eighty-six, which comes out to one fifty-six, uh, ninety-four forty, which like I said, will be broken down into a yearly basis.
How many tasers do you have presently?
Uh, we have eighteen.
Eighteen. And they scheduled to expire?
Yes, sir.
And the, uh, how many body cameras do you have presently?
Presently, we supposed to have, supposed to have eighteen, but I have to be, uh, initial count on that. I think presently we bought sixteen. Uh, we bought, and, and we bought them in eight, we bought eight. One year and we bought eight, the second year, next year, we need to buy them all together. And that's the reason that the chief is having so much problem trying to get them, cause we trying to purchase them all at one time. And that's why it was turned down to manage the budget because it would have made the budget go over. But now they came up with another, uh, way to purchase these things, these cameras, these, this equipment by doing over a five-year warranty. And my thing, uh, that we need to discuss with the company when they come here to meet next Wednesday is they said they expired, so what expires? Because a taser, you still can use the taser. I mean, it's just like a weapon. So I, I, you know, I don't know if, if we have to buy a brand-new taser or is just the battery pack that attaches to the taser? So that's a question that we have to ask the, the dealer. Cause I can't see every five years, the city has to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to, for this, for this equipment.
And that's for every officer?
Yeah.
You could have eighteen officers, okay.
Well, the, the first time we bought sixteen was just for uniform patrol, cause the detectives didn't need, uh, body camera and a taser. I'm assuming this year they, they, they using two extras. You know, like I said, the, the detectives, they, they go out on the field sometime, they work overtime. Then you have the point where, you know, person's taser or something breaks down, camera breaks down, you have that spare that they can use to, to send that other, you put it off to get it fixed and get it back.
I think my question here is about the storage. Um, with the body cam, like if that included the, all the storage and, and even if we have to change over, what happened to the storage from the last body, uh, cameras?
Well, that's a separate package because what we talking about with the equipment itself, when you talking about the maintenance for these, for the, the storage of the, the video and everything that's recorded, that's another thing that the chief has to pay for. I think it's monthly. Yeah, I'm, I'm with that. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to come here next week. But that's just like I asked, uh, Casey is, I mean, you know, what happens to the equipment that we have? Do we get some type of credit?
Yes, we do. Uh, programs?
Right. Cause some of that could be used. Just, just like when we, we changed our own service involved, you know, we usually, uh, they'll buy back, uh, you know, at, at a cheaper rate and give us a, a discount. Yeah, I, I would, I would, I give Captain Wade more, give it to rep and see if we can't get credit on that old equipment. And, and the other thing when we can look at chief is, is it just every five years, instead of buying sixteen, you know, you can start buying, like we did, uh, the first time, buy eight at a time or nine and then the next year you buy your, your next one.
I still want to notice, know that question a little. I mean, I know you were saying that storage wasn't included, but just since we own the body cam issue, how long do they keep the storage for the body cameras?
It's, it's, it's down, is they have a docking station? Is, is docking, the officer supposed to come in after, after they tour and dock the cameras? Until the waiting goes over and everything? Um, I don't know exactly the, the time of how long we have it, but I can get that information for you.
While we talking about the equipment, what about the radar guns? I know y'all was shortage of that at one time because, um, the reason why I'm saying that because we have officer on the, uh, bus stop and they don't have radar gun, so they can't really, you know, keep children safe if they don't have a radar gun. So do every officer have a radar gun in their unit or, or what?
Every officer doesn't have a radar gun.
I mean, you didn't think about getting one? Um, you know, I mean, I think we need more than two.
No, I'm not, like he sets that up. You set that up and determine where that's gonna be used. So it's not like. Being churning as a.
Yeah, but they on bus duty, uh, on bus stop and nobody don't have radar. And people flying through there and with the purpose of them sitting out there, they can't protect children anyway.
Chief, give a radar gun.
But no, no, you can't tell how fast they go. You know?
I'm looking to that in the future, but I'm looking to that.
Cause I did that for fourteen years and I know how it's feeling. And he said they will get the radar gun. I don't have any question, that is a new question.
You want that form to do now?
That's Gary, somebody else.
The, uh, rep will be here next week?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with Captain Wade and, and if he does, the, the, the main guy that Captain Wade talked to, he get somebody that's in this general area that we'll have to give next one.
Okay, we can make that agenda item for next week.
All right.
Item number five, John.
Thank you.
Before I complete the meeting, Ms. Rose, I, I have something to tell me, since, um, right there. Okay, Ms. Tony, I personally want to say thank you. I couldn't even remember have, having seen you since then for the Hardest Champions Parade, for your generous donation. Uh, everyone enjoys the entertainment and I just want to say thank you on behalf of council. Uh, we appreciate what you did.
And we appreciate being able to participate. I mean, uh, we always like to, um, you know, try to be part of the community in places that allow us to work there, so that's, that's great. And I, I think the, uh, you know, it's pretty cool what they accomplished, so, you know, I'd like, I enjoy doing that. Thank you, man.
Thank you, John.
All right, council, the mayor's correspondence, uh, in reference, I heard someone mention about the certifications. We did have one person that did take this, uh, class two certification in wastewater treatment, that's Marcus Williams and, uh, he is certified as a class two operator and they, uh, moved him and stepped him up to that position. Marcus, boy.
Congratulations.
And, uh, we have, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Graff is gonna get his certification this month in Lake Charles and they have another class for, uh, uh, class three cert, uh, test, which I think, uh, Mr. Dove is on, uh, later, should be the next month or in September. Other than that, uh, we're still working on some things throughout the city concerning, uh, blighted property and nuisance. Uh, I had Mr. Giffrey to go around and, uh, check some particular areas that have been identified. I'm still waiting on his report and as soon as I get those reports, uh, we're gonna take actions on, on those, uh, properties and need, uh, attention. We still trying to finalize and finish up the, uh, Fourteenth Street, uh, bathroom and hopefully we can get started on the, we want downtown. Spence Construction is working with the city on all our, uh, sewer repair work and tie-ins. In fact, uh, as you know, they mentioned earlier, California, Eighth Street is still having issues and, uh, we trying to resolve that either by purchasing the property next to that intersection or, uh, uh, trying to come up with some type of idea how we can put a pump at that particular location above ground. Fourth of July was, uh, pretty it. Uh, you know, the hiccup was the fireworks. They had a little fire on the bar, so that kind of cut the show a little short. But, uh, I didn't hear any bad reports and, uh, it was well attended and, uh, my guys got, uh, this morning and, uh, finished cleaning up the levee on this side. We still have a little trash on the other side, but, uh, uh, we got a good report about the attendance this year. And, you know, the other thing is, uh, we gonna work on trying to get this air conditioning fixed. Problem is, but, uh, seems like every time we have a council meeting, it breaks. Without being said, uh, anybody got any other questions?
I just want to say how nice those banners look on those lamps.
Yeah, sure.
They really. Put on to it.
Yeah.
Now, could we just do that all the way down Court Street?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's in the works.
Well, maybe, uh, this don't have anything to do with the city council, but I just want to wish my mom a happy birthday. She made ninety-one today. And my son will be thirty-four tomorrow. So, yeah, that's a good blessing to have my mom here in her right mind, steady on me, but she in her right mind, so that's a truly a blessing for ninety-one years. I know she, I keep her running. I, I'm the one that keep her busy.
Tell her happy birthday.
Thank you.
And your son good.
Thank you.
Hey, when y'all, when y'all get a chance, give my, uh, uh, frozen drainers screw, uh, a pat on the shoulder, cause they did, they did a good job cleaning up the downtown area and also the Court Street portal for this event this past weekend. And, uh, y'all, it was hot all last week.
Oh, yes.
And they were mad at me.
They still, they still coming, man, are they still coming to work at six o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, they, they, they come in at six. Try to get out as quick as possible.
Try to beat that heat, yeah.
I had, uh, Monday, they were out there on court cleaning every bit of it.
Yeah.
And I had these, uh, water bottles that I had frozen in the, uh, freezer. So I brought them all, all that. I said, come fall out, take a little while.
Yeah.
So I brought them all, all that, I said, come fall out, take a little while, it'll feel good.
That's all, that's all I want to say to, you know, the, the community and everything, guys, see the guys out there, you know, working there, you know, give them one bottle.
Yeah, that's right, that's, that's what you want.
Mix it up with.
I go out there and add one. I, I know sometimes we do have tend to forget them small people, but, but little details, but that make a lot. Elliot, that was very nice, alive. Be that you was able to do.
For the senior there? Oh, yeah, that was nice, yeah.
Yes, we gotta really give thanks to our IT guys.
Yeah, you did a great job. You did a great job.
I, I think that was just marvelous. I appreciate that, thank you.
They gave them opportunity to sit inside in the cool air and watch the event.
That was.
Yeah, that was nice.
See, Rose, I ain't got nothing about everything.
They didn't miss anything, you didn't want to miss it, you didn't probably get outside. I thought about something, yeah.
I went to church with my daddy, I can reach you. What was, the Florida group?
Oh, yeah, Florida group, they like that too.
Yeah, they did, they liked that. I think they enjoyed everything, to be honest with you.